It is six thirty. Let us, let us begin. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for October the eighteenth, 2017. I'd like you all to stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, proud, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. What I'd like to do first is approve the warrants. Well, no, maybe first I would like to just say that the chairman is not able to attend this evening's meeting, and we will, and have moved most of tonight's agenda to November seventh. What I'd first like to do is approve warrants. Approve an expense warrant for October the sixteenth, seventeen, RVX refunds for a total of seven hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-one cents.
I'll make that motion?
Oh, we're just hang-
You want to do all of them?
We'll do it all together, I think.
Yep.
Good plan?
Yep.
Approve expense warrant of October seventeenth, seventeen, for a hundred thirty-eight thousand five forty-seven and ninety-eight cents. Approve expense warrant for ten-ten, seventeen, for thirty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy cents. Approve an expense warrant for October fourth, seventeen, for two thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. I believe, Karen, you just want to double-check that now that I'm looking at that. I'm thinking it's ninety-four cents.
What can I add?
Uh, zero-nine-four.
Oh.
So I'm thinking you meant ninety-four.
Yeah, I think it's ninety-four, too.
Approve warrant article of October the third, seventeen, RVX refunds for thirty-six thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents, uh, fifty-six cents. Approve expense warrants for October seventeenth, seventeen, for twenty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. And approve expense warrant for October seventeenth, seventeen, for eleven thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. If I could have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept all of the above-mentioned expense warrants.
Thank you, and I'll second it. Any discussion on that?
No.
No discussion? Those in favor of approving the warrants as listed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes. Approve selectmen's minutes for Oct-, uh, for August third, seventeen, and executive session set of minutes for September twenty-seventh, seventeen.
The eight-and-three-seventeen is the executive session minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Twenty-seventh ones.
Oh, thank you.
And Linda, execute first one, and we'll get the first one.
Okay. All right, so can I have a motion to that effect? Eight-three-seventeen, executive session, and nine-twenty-seven, seventeen.
Uh, you have a motion.
Thank you. Second, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes. Approval of minutes, monthly reports from other departments, advisory committee minutes of September the fourteenth, seventeen. Fire department monthly report, September twenty-seventeen. EMS monthly report, September twen-, uh, seven, uh, twenty-seventeen.
Give us some notices on that if you want to read it. I waited in the-
Yep, I did, yeah, I just pulled it out of the study. Uh, well, let me make the motion and then we can discuss.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes and the reports.
And I'll second, yep.
Um, and then just some discussion. We've got three new members of the Brookfield Fire Department. Matthew Langvin, Luke Quitruchelli, and Micah Laird. Uh, so thanks to those three people for volunteering, stepping forward, because, uh, we're certainly in a position where we could use some more on-call firefighters.
Right.
And then also, we have an eight-year anniversary for Daniel Driscoll. Um, on September first was his eight-year anniversary with us, and then we have also a new member is Micah, Micah Laird.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Yes. So, those in favor of, um, accepting the reports signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes. Announcements. Trick-or-treat Halloween events will be Halloween night of October thirty-first, trick-or-treat in the village in common areas from six PM to seven-thirty PM. Meet at the fire station for the parade to the common will leave promptly at seven-thirty. Costume contest in the gazebo upon arrival at the common. In an effort to help those who live in the trick-or-treat area, trick-or-treating area, candy donations are being accepted at the library and at the elementary school through October the twenty-eighth. Please remember that these donations are meant to help ease the burdens of those in the village in common areas, and are not intended to be the sole source of trick-or-treat candy. There will be no bonfire this year. And then follows Tyler Wallenin, District Eight of Senator Engobe, will be holding office hours at Brookfield Town Hall from two to three PM Thursday, October nineteenth tomorrow. Um, all are welcome. Uh, and then the Brookfield Winter Parking Ban. Uh, an announcement, a winter parking ban is in effect in Brookfield from November fifteenth to April first for all public ways in the town during the hours of eleven PM to six AM. There will be no parking on the streets whether or not snow is predicted. Any violation is subject to a twenty-five dollar fine. And with that, we open the floor to public access. Good evening, and welcome.
Okay, on September twenty-seventh, I was not here. You talked about the Verizon, I owe Verizon bill, and you talked about trees not being planted by me.
Yep.
Okay, so that's a total lie. Five trees were planted on the site of the house. You stated that I had planted trees.
That's what I was told.
Who were you told to by that?
The Highway Department.
Okay, what do they know about it? They went to, they were not the tree warden at the time.
Thank you for informing me.
Well, you should be checking before you make a, a statement like that.
I checked with who I thought had responsibility.
And I told, uh, I told Bill, the former tree warden, back in April and May of this year that I had planted five trees, just so he would know. Just we were talking about different things and trees, and I just told him I had done that.
Okay, thank you.
So I think you should make a, uh, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna make a statement, it should be a true statement.
So we have a, a plan of where, where the trees were supposed to be and what was planted where?
No, no. He never told me when, where, how, so I just took it upon myself when I planted five in front of the stone wall, on-town property. In with the rest of them, because that's where the trees were cut originally.
So but you didn't tell anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and there was, there was no, no paper trail, or there's no format or anything to follow. They just, they made it, now it's just plant five trees, so that's right there.
Okay, thank you.
Second of all, Beth, you were talking about Verizon bill.
Yep.
How Verizon, uh, talking about they're supposed to, you know, I'm supposed to pay for the details.
Yep.
So let me set you straight now, because you don't know what you were talking about. When, in this state of mass-
So stop right there before you start, okay?
All right, okay.
Before you say that, I don't know what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Did you or did you not move a building?
No, that's, let me finish.
Okay, so, but before you say I don't know what I'm talking about-
I'm gonna stick to that, yes, that's true.
Okay, so, and Verizon conducted work that they would not normally conduct in order to move that building.
Why don't you let me finish?
Okay, I'll let you finish, but, but instead of saying, let's set you straight, why don't we have a discussion about the facts of the matter instead of getting personal at the very beginning?
Well, let me, let me say what, right, well, that's what I'm gonna get to.
Because I've, I've only been talking about the bill and the facts that the building was moved. I have made no inclination about what you know or what you don't know. Okay, so let's keep it on terms of what's the facts of it.
Right, so the facts of what you did say was that you said, oh, that they're moving a generator or a transformer, that's different. But when they're moving a house and wires, that's different, you said. Remember? Watch the tape. So I'm gonna tell you how it works in the state of mass, okay? In the state of mass, no utilities, only air rights, okay? So if I want to move a building or a big truck, the utility companies have to move the wires or whatever's in the air at their expense, whatever it takes. Now, if, prior to the house being moved, they were in town for two weeks.
So which mansion or lot do you say cites that?
Oh, I don't, just look, I don't know what it is offhand, but it's there. I've just, I've done two houses.
So you're citing what the facts are, so-
Right, so if you-
I would think that you would know which master-
Well, you can look it up. I'm just stating the word, the facts. So, I've moved two houses, and the utility companies are responsible for moving the wires, police details, anything else that they have to do. Engineering, planning, blueprints, it's all on them. Done two houses. Now, when I moved this house, that if you noticed, the trucks were in town for three weeks prior to the move, because they had to rack all the wires, they had to put loops in the wires, they had to get everything ready to go, so when the day of the move, they could just drop the wires. So, they were responsible for that day. I was responsible for the house move. The house move had two state troopers, that was my responsibility. Verizon was responsible for the details of the wires. Now, we had details in North Brookfield, Verizon did, because we had wires down on one forty-eight, and they had to stop traffic up on one forty-eight. Those details got paid by Verizon the same day. But they said, they told Brookfield, they told the police chief and the secretary over there, and they told me three different times, and we were told by three different people, and they told me prior, that the bills will be paid by us.
So did you get the name of any of the people you were talking about?
Oh, I got a whole book, and I have a whole book, and so does the police chief. We all have them.
So, so-
We all get their names. But then some supervi-, let me finish.
Okay.
Some supervisor came on, and she says, oh, we don't want to pay the bills now, so whoever wants to pay can pay. So that's where it's at now, and that's where the chief and I have been trying to work, trying to get through to someone else above her, because everyone else that was in charge, and they had big jobs, said they were gonna pay the bill. Now, they paid North Brookfield's details, so why wouldn't they pay Brookfield? It's all the same. And they paid ninety thousand dollars' worth of moving the wires before the house got moved, roughly, that's what one of the guys told me. So they're responsible for the lousy twelve-hundred dollars for the, I think it was three officers, maybe four.
Yeah, eleven hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Twelve-hundred, four, I think it was four officers were on-
Probably for four hours.
Oh, no, it was eight hours. I think they were on for, I think two of them were on for eight, two were on for six or something like that. So, when you, when you make, make a statement about me owing the Verizon bills, I do not owe the Verizon bills.
Okay, so if you provide the names of the people that you spoke with at Verizon-
Well, the, the chief's got all that, and Holly's got all that over there, too.
Okay.
And we're trying to, we're trying to-
They said they didn't have the, they said they didn't have the names, do you-
Oh, they got the names, I've given them to them twice already, oh, yeah. The secretary, I have.
It may have been a while ago. When did you last give them the names?
Well, when we were trying to get this resolved, that was a year ago. Oh, yeah, so good year ago.
Can you provide again?
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get the name. But my point is, don't make statements and talk about, you know, how, how the Verizon and how they work and who pays what, because it's not true. My house move is completely different than, now, if I had a telephone pole move, which I did, up on East Main, that was on me. I had to pay the detail on that, because it's a telephone pole, that's different. That's not air rates. So they said, if you want the pole move, you have to pay us, and I did.
It adds up to, we're still, the town is still outstanding eleven hundred dollars.
Around twelve, yeah.
The town is still outstanding.
I understand that.
Okay.
So if you can provide the names of the people that you contacted at Verizon, again, apparently you supplied it a year ago, my understanding is that the police didn't, or at least when I checked with them like two months ago, they did not have the contact information of the people you had spoke with. So I would like that from you if you have it.
Okay, I can get that, yeah.
So that, um, we can escalate it, because frankly, our administrative assistant at the, at the police station is not a collector, okay? That's not part of what her skillset is.
No, but she, what her job is, her job is to follow up on details and who gets paid and who's not been paid.
Absolutely.
And where the money, where the money's coming from the contractors, that's her job. So in essence, that is her job, to make sure that the money does come in.
Right, but clearly, if Verizon is being difficult, it may be beyond the scope of what she's able to do. So if you have the contact information, I would appreciate it.
Right, so, I'm working, I talked to the police chief and me and him, he's gonna get back to me, I told him, and he's gonna find out what needs to be done.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that's, that's what, I, I talked to him when Monday or Tuesday, I think it was, when he got back from vacation, I think it was Tuesday when he came back, it was on or, that's when I talked to him. So, all right, so you get that. Why are we running four one-ton dump trucks in this town?
I don't know.
You the selectmen? As far as I know, managers?
Sure, sure.
Okay, so why are we running four one-ton trucks? So you find that out?
Karen, well, actually, I've heard the request before, so I would then just turn to Karen, could you just send an email to Linda and ask the question, because the question has been asked before, and I think that she was, in fact, probably researching.
I think she's the one that looked into it initially.
Yeah, I think she did, did she give you an answer?
She did give an answer.
Who?
You. Who's gonna give me an answer?
Linda. When they answered you at open meeting like-
Oh, no, 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 she didn't, she did not give me the answer on the four trucks, no.
Okay.
And if she did, I didn't hear it, I'm sure I heard it if she did, you know?
Okay.
So I'm just, I mean-
Well, I, Linda?
Four one-ton trucks, I mean, what, what's going on? How many more trucks do we need in town? It's more than we have for drivers.
Okay.
What are you doing? Okay, now, another thing I was not happy with you guys is, um, John LaPointe, when you guys ordered the houses to be removed, you guys weren't too compassionate with him, you know, thirty days, bang, you know? You couldn't give him a little bit more time?
You got, you got what everybody else got.
Well, other people aren't living in the, other people weren't even connected to the houses, that was his house recently, within six months. The other house has been empty for umpteen years.
He could have appealed.
That's a little different scenario. This is, a guy just lost his house within six months, and you don't even, six, what was it, six, yeah, seven, eight months, somewhere in there, February, and you couldn't even, you know, give him a little bit more time? I mean-
No.
Well, I don't, I mean, you know, we're a small little town, and you can't even have a little compassion for a guy, he's in a, he's practically in a elderly place.
And what we understood from the health inspector was that the building should not even be entered, it was that severe, so I think I trust the health inspector to give us direction.
No, I, I have a building next to it, and it's, 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 the building is sound, and I've been in it, and it's fine.
Well, I mean, we even had one of the abutters here saying that he was hearing stuff falling off the building, so-
Yeah, I, I was here when, when he said that, but the buil-, pretty much the building is sound, there's nobody around it, you know? And I'm talking about letting a guy, you know, having, if he needed a little bit more time, I think, you know, you should have given him a little bit more time, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
When are you taking, when are you planning on taking the houses down? Do you have any timeframe?
The court has to act.
Okay, so then he's got what, okay.
Right.
So it's thirty days.
It's really thirty days until-
The court acts.
The next day, next step in the process.
Well, that's what I, that's what I, that's what I asked the town attorney, he's gotta go to the court and get-
Right. Now that the period of thirty days has run out, he needs to go to the court and get approval. And that usually happens, and then, then it's another forty-eight hours after that.
Mm-hmm.
So that the time available to you is thirty days plus when the court acts, and the courts seemingly are acting very slowly these days on those guys.
Largely, yes.
So.
Well, they're busy.
Yep.
All right. So you're gonna get an answer on the trucks, then?
Yep, thank you.
All right.
All right, with that, uh, the, move to the agenda. The first item on the agenda is Mass Historical Update, just a quick one, that in fact, Mass Historical has commented to UMass's documentation, and I'm hopeful that this week UMass will be putting the documentation together so that I can provide my report, and with, hopefully in the next two weeks, we'll close out that account and get our money back. So that's Mass Historical. There is a public document that's hovering around that, uh-
It's a copy in there.
-that's in the selectmen's office, if anyone is interested in getting a advanced copy of the public document. I'll move to item number two, a vote to plow public roads. So, this was a little, minutes, minutes, Beth, you got in there.
I left it in the same order I found it.
I tell you, I tell you.
You did not even start.
I know, but help me, I can't even-
Here's the plow, here's the plow.
That's the Mass's article, thank you, thank you, sir. I'm old, I'm an old guy. All right, and it's been highlighted, so I can read it correctly.
Yeah, and I did actually have some questions surrounding this one.
Okay, so let's, let's start. Uh, due, due to the difficulty in obtaining the whole harmless agreements, Herb, Herb J.P., Highway Superintendent, is recommending that the usual project roads be plowed for this year with the addition of Chestnut Street. Included in this list is Brunel Ave., Chestnut Street, Draper Ave., Draper Street, Porch Street, a section that was repaired, Joe Gauded Road, Lakeside Ave., Lane Twenty-One, Lane Twenty-Four, Latanda Drive, Mel Lane, Oak Ave., and Ward Street. And with that, do I have a motion to-
You have a motion to plow public roads?
And I'll second it for discussion.
I'll second it for discussion. So my, my one question is, just to fully safeguard the town, is it worth doing one more certified mail, mailing of some form of release to the property owners that have not returned their release? And basically make it, give them one of the dates of our future selectmen meetings? And say that unless they appear before the public hearing to state they don't want their road plowed, they, they are in essence concurring with the whole harmless agreement?
Would that be legal to do it that way?
Sure.
I mean, it's better than us just voting it. To me, I, I think it's safer for us to go ahead and send a certified mailing that, that includes what they're supposed to return to us, and say, please return it by, you know-
Right.
-some, some date. However, if you fail to return it and you don't appear before us on this date-
You're accepting.
-you're accepting the conditions of this whole harmless.
That's a good one.
We, you know, we've sent out the ones that we haven't received, I don't know if we're gonna get them, we, we sent them out, um, twice, and I believe the second time was certified, I'll check with Lois, but I think it was-
Right.
The problem is, like, so it happened last year, we had like twenty-two, um, twenty-two Harold Philammas agreements that we needed to get back.
Yep.
This time, because scope's kind of been-
Creepy.
It's been expanded, because when we went to the assessor's, um, he gave us a list that was like seventy-something, because it included all the abutters in the back, and not just people that lived on the road, but abutters, even if they slightly abutted, which this is the problem, most people are saying, we've never had to sign them before, some of them are flattered, we're refusing to sign them, like you said, this, these are the things we've been, you know, we've been experiencing, so yeah, it probably would be a good idea to do that.
Right, I don't know if it would fully cover us, it might be worth a note to, to town council, but I would, I would presume that it at least puts us in a stronger stand if somebody later came back to say, you know, that they had some problem with our splown.
Yeah, I'm thinking, have, at least notifying them to say, you have to say no.
Right.
Is, you know, whether we send out an additional set of forms, I'm, you know, impolite to that.
Right.
But sending out a letter that says, oh, by the way, we didn't get these back, and do you want us to plow this road or not?
Right. And silence is consent.
Silence is consent.
Right.
So, do you want to catch with Cindy and Lawson?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, as amended?
As amended.
As amended to, uh, send-
A third notice certified.
A third notice certified. No return.
Oh.
Says it's okay.
Yep.
Okay? That good?
It's good.
All right, so we have a motion, and we've amended it, we'll vote the amendment. Those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Those back to the main motion, um, of the plowing public roads as amended-
Aye.
With the third notice, aye, and motion passes, unless there's somebody else here that's gonna say no, and no one else is, will say no. All right, so with that, uh, sign special permits, we have an opportunity, Doc.
Oh, dear.
Your signature, but I'm thinking, if I read ten of these, maybe?
Yep, and then-
And you sign ten of those, we do that, and-
I think we can do that.
Three, four, five, six-
I brought my magic pen, so we're good.
Seven, eight, nine, ten, and if your hand gets tired-
I'll let you know.
-we'll stop, all right? So, um, we are now looking for the Brookfield lines, maximum number of vehicles, I'm gonna figure what we want to read here.
It's second page, isn't it?
Second page is the better page?
Well, no, that has the amount of vehicles, usually they just say the, the group, and the date, and the pond, and then how many vehicles.
Okay, I'm looking for, so we're talking-
Everything's on the front except for the amount of vehicles, the participants or vehicles, I think she said.
Oh, we're looking at fifty vehicles, uh, we're looking at event on January twenty-seventh on the Quabog River by the Brookfield lines, that's what. We're looking for Quabog Pond on April twenty-first, twenty-eighteen, by the Neva of Massachusetts.
Didn't find any way back.
And twenty-five vehicles, yeah, we basically, we're just in that corner. We're now dealing with May the thirteenth, twenty-eighteen, Quabog Pond, the Ry, Bass Stocker, Starks, okay, twenty vehicles. We're looking at April twenty-second, twenty-eighteen, Quabog Pond, the Weedheart Anglers, and twenty vehicles. April the twenty-ninth, twenty-eighteen, Quabog Pond, the Ice Holes, and seventeen. May the sixth, twenty-eighteen, Quabog Pond, Neva again, and twenty-five vehicles. May the twelfth-
I missed one below it.
Oops, I missed one below it, I'll do that again. Uh, was there two ice? No.
Might be, might be two different cars.
No, I did this guy.
Oh, you did?
Yep, I did that guy, I promised. Um, May the twelfth, twenty-eighteen, uh, Quabog Pond, Good Spirit Bass Masters, and fifteen vehicles. And then we have May the twentieth, twenty-eighteen, Quabog Pond, Massachusetts Bass Federation, twenty-five vehicles. And I have Quabog Pond, Pioneer Valley Bass Anglers, nineteen vehicles.
Do you have to date, are you putting the, saying the dates?
Who? Yep, uh, May twenty-seventh.
Five twenty-seventh.
Yep, and then June sixteenth, twenty-eighteen, Quabog Pond, Fall River Bass Anglers, twenty-three vehicles. So, we'll take the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve all of those as read.
I'll second that. So, with that, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes. So that's five, six, seven.
Just trying to make sure, I accidentally have the overlapping dates, and so far we're good. we're good.
So Beth, how, we have 10, 20, we have 13 more. You good for 13 more?
I'm good for 13 more.
In that way, we don't have to do this again for a while. Okay, moving off to June the 30th, 2018, Quayborg Pond, Nabasson, Small Boat Kayak Trail, 17 vehicles.
Now, to the best of your knowledge, we haven't had any complaints or reports after any of these, because I know I haven't seen anything on any type of problem log of any of these since...
Eight years ago.
What's that?
Not since a couple of years ago, when someone requested that they, something about the, the extra port ponds.
Port ponds, yep.
But I think that was a big one, which is the Alliance Club, which they always, has never happened, have been complained since.
After all this.
Okay, great.
All right, moving off to July 22nd, 2018, Quayborg Pond, American Bass Anglers, District 36, 25 vehicles. August 5th, 2018, Quayborg Pond, 97 fish, and 20 vehicles.
Yep, that's great.
So we're now dealing with August 5th, 2018, South Pond, 97 fish, and five vehicles.
That is actually the same date.
Are they two different ponds?
Oh, yep, one's South Pond and one's Quayborg, okay. That's interesting, so they split up across two.
Two.
Got it.
Oh, are you ready?
Yep.
Okay, we're now August the 11th, 2018, Quayborg Pond, Blackstone Valley Bass Masters, and 16 vehicles.
Great.
We're off to August 12th, 2018, Quayborg Pond, Coventry Bass Anglers, and 16 vehicles. We are at August 25th, 2018, Quayborg Pond, Wachusett Bass Masters, 16 vehicles. August the 25th, 2018, South Pond, Brookfield, South Pond, Worcester County Bass, Bassers, there we go.
Almost feel like we should have a separate page on our website for all of the fishing events that we hold in town, seriously.
It's great, it's great.
Just link to all of them.
August the 29th, 2018, South Pond, South Metal Six Bass Anglers, I actually saw them stocking a pond the other day, and five vehicles.
You could do that.
Yeah, honestly, it's not a bad idea, and I'm sure they would appreciate the, the publicity, and it couldn't hurt for people in the area to be aware of what we've got.
Yeah.
I thought we were so popular, huh?
What's that? I didn't, I did not know we were so popular.
Schools are popular, and...
And the ponds are popular.
And the ponds are popular, well, they've been popular for 3,000 years, so let's get, get that straight, exactly. September 8th of 2018, South Pond, Quayborg Lake Association, and seven vehicles. And we have September the 8th, 2018, Quayborg Pond, Quayborg Lake Associates, and 25 vehicles, so that's the two ponds. And then, November, September the 9th, 2018, Quayborg Pond, Lip Ripper Fishing Club, and 15 vehicles. And September the 23rd, 2018, Quayborg Pond, Northeast Ry Bass, and 15 vehicles. September the 16th, 2018, Quayborg Pond, Last Cast Anglers, and 19 vehicles. Last but not least, October the 7th, 2018, Quayborg Pond, Bass Attics, and 17 vehicles.
I'll make a motion to the effect of all of these?
Yeah, I'll second that. Any further discussion on fishing in Brookfield? Seeing none, those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion passes. All right. Ooh, can we have, should we do this tonight, cemetery deed?
Yeah, Mike put that in at the last minute, that's why I put it under other, because it was not close to the cemetery.
All right, so we have a cemetery deed that appears needs to be acted upon this evening. So with that, with that, repurchase, this is the repurchasing of plot 66, grave number B in section A. And towards Commissioner Selectman, I understand order to execute this agreement. And the lottery was the Price Wars and the O'Combs. So with that, I'll have a motion to sign this memorandum of repurchase.
Ah, you have that motion?
And I'll second it. And those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion passes. So we're good for the rest of these, am I correct? Karen?
Yes, that, that, that's all the others in case it should come up.
The next one.
I'm going to turn out that that's not going to go out yet.
Yep, good.
Nothing amiss.
Nothing in correspondence, so then it's just other, and I do have one other, just speaking of things that are happening, we'll let that, oh, was there something that had to be signed, or was it just...
No, that was just it, I think it's, there is actually the actual deed, it looks like we do need to sign that.
Yep. All right, so that takes care of that. So, just parking deal, we took care of the parking deal.
Yep.
Okay, so just one last other that I have, is that on Saturday, on the 14th of October, the Brookfield churches connected to the original, or groups to the original meeting house, had a service on Foster Hill where the different churches participated, we had great turnout, and this signifies the 300th anniversary of the first meeting house, and the putting of the minister in position, and as it works out, on December the 18th of 2018, we, we have the opportunity to celebrate the 300th town meeting.
Oh, really?
The 300th town meeting, or, next year is the 300th anniversary of the first town meeting of the town of Brookfield. So it will be something that we need to think about how to celebrate.
That's a good plan.
I'm glad I brought it up.
I'm glad you brought it up your own.
Is that what it was all for, Brookfield's?
Yeah, that was what it was all for.
That was what it was all for, Brookfield's.
Yeah, but now, rather than where the meeting house was, being in West Brook, yeah, we get to celebrate because we are. So, with that, anything else to come forward? Once, twice? So with that, entertain a motion to adjourn?
You have that motion?
I'll second it. Those in favor of adjourn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we're out of here. And it is, it is 704. Thanks, Kevin.